Pro call please.
Councilwoman Mary?
Here.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes, here.
Councilwoman Solomon?
Here.
Mayor Ashworth?
Here. Pro of meetings, last meeting.
I motion that we approve the June 1st, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Second. Open.
Councilwoman Mary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Solomon?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes. Okay. Let me comment, Rich Engle.
Richard Engle, representing multiple nonprofits in the area. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, city officers, staff and attendees. I want to give you a quick overview of the Gold Camp Association. Essentially, the Gold Camp Association is a collection of nonprofits, businesses, individuals and government elements working together in the Gold Camp District, Purple Creek and Victor to put on family-friendly events in the community. We plan, coordinate, organize, market and actually conduct the events. Anyone can join the Gold Camp Association. Currently, we have over forty of these entities signed up in Purple Creek and Victor, supporting us as members or associates. A member is an entity that's probably going to run an event and support other events. An associate is somebody who supports the Gold Camp Association and what we're doing in the community. There are no dues, so that's just a indication of support for what we're doing. We don't receive any direct funding from the cities, but thank you very much for your support of what we're doing in terms of providing traffic control and toilet facilities for our events. We informally started in 2020 with the Aspen Tours when the donkeys needed to have care during the winter. We conducted that event in that fall and we raised eight thousand dollars for the donkeys. This last year, we ran most of the events that were conducted up here and we added, in addition to the Victor, Purple Creek, American Legion post, Two Mile High Club and the Teller Rifles as core members, we added the Victor Business Alliance and the Victor Main Street Commission. So it was a larger entity at that time. This year, we've become more organized. We're registered with the State of Colorado as a nonprofit. We have articles in corporation and bylaws, ready to go to the IRS, recognized by them as a nonprofit. We have a bank account, we have insurance, we have our volunteers organized into five teams: leadership, marketing, volunteers, technology and events. The first event we held this year was in conjunction with Park and Rec. It was an Easter egg hunt. We had a hundred and eighty-five kids out there, probably as many as four hundred other people that included parents and grandparents and families and friends and things like that. One parent called it organized chaos and the kids loved it because it was a lot of fun for them. The next up is the Fourth of July Celebration, coming on Monday, Independence Day, and it'll be held in the district museum parking lot. And essentially, it's going to start at noon with food and soft drinks. One o'clock, we kick off with, we'll have three live bands, we'll have root beer floats, the donkeys will be there, we're going to have a beer tent, we're going to have the city's other emergency services, first responder vehicles and personnel. We're going to also have patriotic items for sale and other materials. So I think it's going to be a great event. After that, we'll be working with the Victor Business Alliance on the Victor Gold Rush days. And what I want to do once again is to thank you for your support of us and what we're trying to do in the community. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions?
Thank you, Rich. I have posters that will be displayed around. You all may have them if you would like, so it lays out the order of events on Fourth of July. Thank you. That's your issue.
Reports, city administrator.
Mayor, council, Frank Salvato, city administrator. Couple of things, on June seventeenth, we have two ten years of service. Tess White, sir, with our director of transportation, will have been here ten years, and Shannon Owen, she's the program assistant at Parks and Rec. And this week, Carol got an email, our COVID testing site will close June thirtieth and all but twenty-one community test sites will close all over the state. So we're going to have twenty-one of those sites available around the state of Colorado. That's all I have. And for finance, Paul is on vacation, so he's not here to give you an update. For some reason, he thought he needed a vacation. I don't know.
Presentations, updates and other reports of the hearing. This time, we're going to campaign into the planning commission meeting. We have rules that will go by. I will open the public hearing on the application and certificate of appropriateness submitted by CMH Homes Incorporated and license to the development of six single-family residences at certain real property located in the northwest corner of Carr Avenue, Main Street, Purple Creek, Colorado. Notice of these hearings has been given and required by the Purple Creek Development Home and totally accept such notice and of the beneficiaries as dated or hereby made in part of this record of this proceeding. In considerations for this certificate of appropriateness should be approved. This hearing will address the approval standards and criteria set forth in ordinance nineteen ninety-one dash two and section four point seven point one of Purple Creek Development Home. Is any body opposed to the planning commission meeting in our jurisdiction? If not, we will proceed. This is an order we will proceed. City staff will first present and summarize the case. Number two, the applicant or the applicant's representative may present any evidence in favor of granting of the application. At the conclusion of the applicant's case, any person wishing to speak in support of the application may present evidence. Number four, any person wishing to speak against the application may then present evidence. Number five, then I'll ask for a motion, both opposed, to come up. Number six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. All persons who want to identify themselves and provide their address before speaking. All statements and testimony should be addressed to the council and not to the applicant. At the conclusion of the hearing, the city council will convene and will deliberate and may make a decision on the application. The council may grant any public application, deny any application or bring any application with conditions. Are there any questions to the proceedings of this meeting? Hearing none, we will present the case. This is the first. We had these post-Call last meeting. The first reading to consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh five for the rezoning of Lot sixteen, Lot fifty-one, Purple Creek, Hayden placer, addition from north neighborhood residential R three four, the neighborhood mixed use BB, Ken Billy.
Well, thank you. As I said, we've seen this project, last time we continued this particular case, we had a certificate of appropriateness presented for historic preservation and that was granted and approved. Right, the presentation? It's in the same location you saw before, on the west side, or west side of Main Street, north of Carr. Particular reason for the rezoning of this parcel is the applicant is requesting to develop a combined two parcels into one, which have two separate zoning districts. The southern lot is currently BB and the northern lot is R three four. So the request is to change the northern lot to R three four to BB, so that two lots can be combined into one for the construction of a single residence. Yeah, thank you. This shows the lot in particular, the northern half is Lot sixteen, which is currently R three four, the southern lot, Lot fifteen, is currently BB. This is in conjunction with proposed development of six single-family residences, all which will be in the BB if this zoning change is granted. It's a residential use, which is consistent with adjoining neighbors and recommend that the zoning request be approved. Any questions? Yes, okay. One minor thing on the rezoning requirements, if we've received a written protest from twenty percent of the people living either on the property or owning the property or within a hundred feet of the property, a two-thirds majority from council will be required. Or if staff does not recommend approval, we do recommend approval, so none of these conditions apply, so a simple majority would be adequate for the approval of the rezoning. There were a few other criteria that needed to be addressed to satisfy the rezoning request. First issue was that was there a change of circumstances which dictate necessity for changing this? It's been, as far as I know, vacant for a while, but it's been residential type usage. The second criteria was the zoning originally established in error, and again, we do not find that to be the case. And then the third situation is a peculiar suitability of the proposed area to be rezoned to use as permitted in the new zone district. And so that, the criteria satisfies this criteria because of the peculiar area of having two separate lots, different zoning, combining them for the development is reasonable. Any questions on the rezoning?
Any questions? Thank you, Ken. This time, the applicant may present any evidence in favor of granting the application. You represent the question.
Thank you for your time today. The maps that were previously shown.
Can you put my name into the reference?
Oh, yes, of course. Vincent Hall with Clayton Homes of Pablo. The previous slides showcased the area that has been proposed to be developed. The ownership of these lots was as a consolidated block, so that whole area was owned by the same party and they were unaware that there was two zoning types on that end of it. So the idea was to create conforming zoning through, through all the proposed homes. It would be different zoning associated with different homes.
One question?
Thank you.
Just anybody wishing to speak in favor of the project, speak so. Hearing done, and going opposing the project. Hearing none, then I'll ask for a motion, both opposed, to come up. Move this one close.
Second.
Both please.
Councilwoman Mary?
Yes.
Yes. Councilwoman Green? Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Solomon?
Yes.
Your approach on weather land?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Okay, gen nine two, as then withdrawn, so we'll move on to gen item three.
I'm going to approve the ordinance on first reading.
Pardon?
Are you going to entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading? Are you going to wait and do that?
Probably.
Okay.
Do you want to do it all at one time or?
Well, I think we'll need, we'll need separate motions. So a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash twenty-two dash oh five on first reading and separate public hearing will be in order now. So it's simply a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two dash oh five on first reading.
The other motion?
Our motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh five for zoning of Lot sixteen, Lot fifty-one, Purple Creek, Hayden placer, addition from the neighborhood residential R three four, designated mixed use BB.
Go please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Solomon?
Yes.
Your approach on weather land?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll go back into planning commission meeting. To consider resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, approve the application for conditional use of six new single-family homes located in the neighborhood mixed use of zone BB at certain real property described as Lot six sixteen, Lot fifty-one, Hayden placer, Lots twenty-three through twenty-four, Lot twelve, Fremont addition, and street to be determined east Carr Avenue, and Main Street, or Main Street, Purple Creek, Colorado. Can we have a presentation on this?
Yes, thank you, Ken Harrell, Planning Department. You have the presentation. Thank you. This is basically the bulk of the request by the applicant. We've gone through historic preservation, we now have the zoning in place, so we can combine the lots as necessary. The previous issue was a replat, because of the size of the plant, it can be handled administratively, which is a little bit more streamlined than going through the ordinance requirements. So again, this is the lots on the south side, or north side of Carr, west of Main Street. There are three lots, you've seen those before. Next, a couple photos of the location as it exists today. Next, please. And next, this is the portion of the Carr Street development, three houses built on basically sixty-foot wide lots. There'll be a driveway to the immediate east of the houses, coming from Carr into the property, and then a fence is proposed around the, from the front of the house, wider than from the house, basically, around the backside to provide enclosure. Next, Main Street is a little bit different. This overlay is a little bit off, it doesn't stick out quite as far into the street as it looks like. We have had a survey and documentation showing where those places will be and it's reasonable. So in addition to the three houses, each of those houses will have a garage on the east or west side of the property. There is an alley which runs north-south from Carr and that will be used as access to those garages, will not be driveways on Main Street. So there's twelve criteria for review. Is it harmonious with the surrounding land use and neighborhood? It's in the BB district, immediately to the north is residential, so houses comply with that. Immediately to the northeast are residential, to the south and east are BB undeveloped parcels. So it's not, there's not much to be harmonious with except for the houses to the north, so it's not posing a hardship on those. Is it harmonious with the master plan? The master plan BB zone talks about a transition area from the business to the residential, looking for a mix of uses from small businesses, apartments and different things. The conditional use is required because it is in the BB district, but it supports the development of residential properties and projects in town, so it's reasonable to move forward based on that. Will overburden existing facilities? No, there is sewer upgrades which will need to be implemented and that's one of the conditions, but otherwise the roads are adequate and should not impact, major impact on town. Impact on the use and bulk of adjacent properties? It's not going to dominate anything. To the west, we have a parking lot, to the east and south are undeveloped properties. So compared to existing uses, there are single-story residences, it's not a, the bulk will not impact adjacent properties. Landscaping fences be provided? Yes, I talked about that along the rear property, side and rear properties, there will be a six-foot cedar privacy fence proposed. And there is some nominal landscaping to be provided in efforts are anticipated to maintain trees as best they can on the north end of the Carr Street properties. Vehicle access, it's a typical residence, Carr Street properties will access Carr from the front of the property. You pull in, assuming you're backing out into, onto the road and, which is typical in most residential neighborhoods. The Main Street properties will access the alley and access parking behind in the garages. Will it discourage through traffic? The only through traffic potential is the alley, there will be development requirement on the alley, there will be asphalt required from the street to the property lines and then gravel upgrades for the driveway at a minimum. That will not continue all the way through to the next street. And so the through traffic will be basically as, as it is now, you'd have a couple more people, but it's anticipated that most traffic will be south to Carr Street. Is parking adequate? Residential requirements for parking, there's one parking stall per unit and the Main Street properties will each have a garage and there will be parking spaces on the drive for the Carr Street properties. Will handicap be accommodated? There are no requirements for residential, handicap requirements on single-family residences. There are no proposed improvements for street or sidewalk and it's not required per public works. Will asphalt paving be minimized? Yes, there's nominal paving at the alleyway, otherwise it's gravel, parking and driveways anticipated. Is pedestrian flow safe and convenient? Basically, what's there now is what's proposed. There are no sidewalk improvements anticipated or required by public works. Does the project development protect natural features? The only real natural features on the site now are current landscaping and, well, trees on the north end of the Carr Street properties, otherwise you've got basically grass and some aspens along the alley and it's anticipated, depending on the footprint and placement, the northern trees will remain, some of the large trees between the first and second lots should still remain, but depends on the construction process. And if you don't remember, this is a quick overview from Carr, looking northeast, there's basically two models proposed. Colors, historic preservation will be different for each house, give it some character and not a monotonous look. Next. And just to close up the two models that are being proposed, one has a half porch with brick veneer and one's a full porch. There'll be three of each of those units and again, just a small overview again. Basically, staff agrees with the proposal and would like to recommend approval of the conditional use permit as proposed. Any questions?
Yes, I have.
Yes, please.
Couple, couple questions. It's basically on the alley right of ways.
Excuse me?
The alley right of ways.
Yes.
Right now, it's just a grass lot.
Yeah.
Who's going to improve the alleys? Because there's two alleys that I see faced here, there's one coming off of Carr and then there's one that connects to it.
Yes.
Back of the Carr lots, is that correct?
Yes, there are two dedicated alleys. One is from Carr running north between the Main Street properties and the Carr properties. That will be improved as part of this development, since the driveways are accessing that, there'll be a gravel upgrade, there'll be a culvert at the street and asphalt paving to the first property line in the right of way. The northern alleyway, which runs east-west, north of the Carr Street properties, is not anticipated to be developed at this time and the driveways will be accessing Carr to the south.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
At this time, anyone wishing to present evidence in support of this development, let's speak.
Vincent Hall with Clayton Homes of Pablo, again. We're excited to bring some new single-family residences to the city of Purple Creek. We think that the proposed development will have character and respect the historical nature of the area, build enhanced family housing opportunities. Are there any questions in regards to what we're thinking?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody wishing to speak in support of the development, let's speak at this time? Anyone wishing to speak against the development? Then I'll ask for a motion, both opposed, to come up.
Our motion that we close public comment?
Second.
Both please.
Councilwoman Mary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Your approach on weather land?
Yes.
Councilwoman Solomon?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Yes.
Our presenters would like to identify. Now your motion. To approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three?
Our motion that we approve, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, approving the application for conditionally use permit for six new single-family homes located in the neighborhood mixed use zone BB at certain real property described as lots six through sixteen, block fifty-one, Hayden, Placer addition, and lots twenty-three through four, block twelve, Fremont addition, to be determined east Carr Avenue and to be determined north Main Street, Kipple Creek, Colorado.
Second. We have reconvened and regimented council meetings, so I want to bring up your motion before we build this. Second.
Council McHenry?
Yes.
Council McHenry?
Yes.
Council Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Linderland?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Okay, new business. Consider approve resolution twenty oh two dash twenty-two for certificate of appropriateness at certain real property legally described as L one through twelve, B nineteen, Kipple Creek, Hayden, Placer addition, including adjacent North Two, VAC, Pike Avenue, and seventy-two VAC, Valley, are described seventy-four fifteen, seventy-four. Southern County State Government.
Good evening, Council Renee Mueller with Planning and Historic Preservation Coordinator. I'm here tonight to request approval for a certificate of appropriateness for the, the applicant is Pete Farrell with Merrill, Merrill or Merit Management, sorry. They're unable to make it tonight, so they're not present. I did let them know that we're meeting tonight, but the supplemental criteria for this is that they fill out an application, they've met all the items in the application, and that they've, they're also required to submit plans that are adequate for review, and our building department has reviewed those as well. The review criteria that is applicable to this is the submitted information regarding drawings, photos, and architectural detailed materials provide adequate documentation to access the criteria. I have a, I'm gonna pull my, my PowerPoint up. So this is for the Wildwood Casinos Hotel. On the west side of that hotel, they have an area that they're requesting a parking lot. They've gotten approval for the parking lot, but they're required to put certain lighting in there, and that's what the certificate of appropriateness is for. It's for the approval of the design. The other item is for additions, that the new construction is compatible but distinguishable from the historic structures and appropriate materials and placement thereof is proposed. The proposed light fixtures are compatible and distinguishable from the historic fixtures. The base and posts are ornate for the times, however, the actual fixture is not as ornate, yet still fits in the proposed, the proposed posts. You can go to the next slide. This is the area. The yellow part is the proposed area for the parking lot and where the lights will be. Next slide. This is the light fixtures that they are proposing. It's pretty difficult to get down lighting anymore with the LEDs that will, there's a requirement in the code that there be one-foot candle five foot above the ground, and we tried like crazy to get this done, but the outer areas of this, the outer border is not really meeting that code. It is a fenced-in parking lot right now. And our city administrator met with them, and that was approved, that it didn't quite meet the code, but it is pretty close. It's just, they've got sixteen fixtures in that small area. If you'll go to the next, this is where all the light fixtures will be, and that, the circles indicate where the, the one-foot candle will be. So it doesn't quite fill the whole parking lot with a one-foot candle above the five-foot grid, but it is pretty close. So Historic Preservation has met and approved those light fixtures, and staff recommends approval for this design, and would ask that City Council and Planning would approve a resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two with no conditions.
Thank you.
I have a question. Another question. Were, were any of the neighbors notified?
Certificate of appropriateness, we do not need to do that. It's not a requirement.
Also, one other question. Under staff recommendation, you put in there, Historic Preservation Commission published a public notice in the Courier, May eighteen, twenty twenty-two, yet you stated, one was in the Courier, then you stated that you also put, oh, here it is, public notice posted in the Gazette on May eighteen.
It's, it's a part of the Gazette thing.
Oh, so, okay.
Yeah, it's the paper that we're required to put it in. Yeah, and the HP only needs to do a seven-day notice, so that's what we did.
Okay, your motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Your motion?
Second.
Second.
Make the second. Go please.
Mayor Proton Linderland?
Yes.
Council Salamani?
Yes.
Council McHenry?
Yes.
Council McGreen?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Okay, then I have a B. Second reading to consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh four, located approximately fourteen thousand five hundred thirty-two square feet of Pike's Peak Avenue right-ofway and the west line of Bison Street and to, and the east line of Fifth Street, together with the sixteen-foot alleyways in block twenty-nine in the city of Kipple Creek in the middle. Is that this?
Your counsel, Ken Harso, Planning Department. I've got a brief presentation showing, we reviewed this in the first reading. We have Mr. Bruce refreshing memory of the property, Pike's Peak, east of Highway sixty-seven, to abandon that property as requested by the casino owners, property owners. Any questions regarding that, I'd like to address those.
The second reading, so we've been through a lot, do this for us.
Yes.
Unless there's, if you might have any questions?
No.
Okay, your motion to
Our motion that we adopt the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh four, located approximately fourteen thousand five hundred thirty-two square feet of Pike's Peak Avenue right-ofway and Jason Alleyways, that portion of sixty-foot Pike's Peak Avenue line between the west line of Bison Street and the east line of Fifth Street, formerly Carrot Highway sixty-seven, together with the sixteen-foot alleys in block twenty-nine in the city of Kipple Creek, Colorado.
Second. Go please.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council McHenry?
Yes.
Council Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Linderland?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
And I have C. Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty, a resolution to decline the city of Kipple Creek participation in the family medical leave insurance program. Carol?
Good evening, Mayor City Council Carol Stotts, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. Staff's requesting approve, approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty, which is a resolution declaring the city of Kipple Creek's decision to opt out of the Colorado P family and medical leave insurance program. Like to thank Erin in her office for her assistance in preparing this resolution. For informational purposes, and in order to provide time for the council to review, staff did provide a recommendation to City Council on May thirty-first. At the same time, staff also released a memo to all city employees in both an email format and a hard print for folks that may not have email. During that memo, we did request feedback from any of our employees for consideration, that we would be able to provide that information and relay that to you, our City Council. The only written feedback that I received was from an employee in our Public Works and Transportation Department, Robert Downs. And his feedback, again, was positive, and he just stated that he'd like to give us feedback on the info that we sent out about this state-sponsored family when he had his medical condition a few years ago. The city had the perfect plan to help take care of him. He personally, personally believes that me and Heather do a much better job than the state will, so hope that helps, and he'd like to stick with what we have. And I do have a copy of that for Melissa for record. I did receive some additional feedback, but it was all verbal, nothing in writing. And all of that feedback was from, of course, members who supported the decision and the recommendation that I am providing to council. So ultimately, the process for us to opt out of family is for the City Council to make a vote to decline that participation. In the fall, when the system is up and running, it's not at this point, we must register with the family program to notify the family division of our decision. Again, the employees will still have the option to self-select family coverage if the city of Kipple Creek does in fact decline participation. And we must notify our employees within thirty days of the vote if we do vote opt out. So I will work on that communication along with Erin. Unfortunately, the state hasn't released the template language yet, but I think we have a pretty general, good general idea of what that needs to look like at this time. And ultimately, if we do vote to opt out, we have to consider this again within eight years. So, again, I would just ask at this point the mayor to take any testimony and/or public comment on this matter.
Your comment?
So, hearing none, I would recommend that you approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twenty, as written, however, I didn't have a chance to talk to Erin about this, but the the seventh whereas, it's the final whereas in the resolution, I would just like to clarify for the record that we add one word, and that word is simply "all." So it would read, whereas it is the desire of the Kipple Creek City Council to decline all participation in family. And I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Your motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty?
Our motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty, resolution to decline city of Kipple Creek's participation in the family and medical leave insurance program.
Second. Go please.
Council McHenry?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Linderland?
Yes.
Council Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol. I have a D. Consider approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen. The resolution rescind the stage fire, stage two fire ban and enact the stage one fire ban that restricts open burning in the city of Kipple Creek, Colorado. Kate, you want to comment?
Just very briefly. We had two feet of snow at the end of May that has dramatically improved our fire conditions. We moved from an extreme fire danger to a high fire danger, and because of that, I am recommending we keep a stage one ban in place, but we permit campfires and other well-controlled fires as enumerated in the resolution. This essentially just prohibits the open burning of either agricultural or other residential property. I think the ordinance, or the resolution is very self-explanatory. We would move from a stage two to a stage one, which is less restricted. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? I hear approval of resolutions twenty twenty-two dash nineteen.
I will so move.
I'll second. Go please.
Council McHenry?
Yes.
Council McGreen?
Yes.
Council Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Linderland?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I will add, the fire danger is not over, so we urge people to continue to be cautious with open flames. Thank you.
Thank everyone for all the work. Doing all these projects, and I think my comment on the housing is this is a very good start on what is very much needed in Kipple Creek, and I think it's very appropriate to put more in.